Let's get started.
Yeah.
So, is... Hello, council.
Hello.
Folks, let's just pull around and give our names really fast. Do you want to start, Diane?
Councilwoman Diane Christ.
Joan Peckner.
Uh, Councilwoman Yarrow.
Uh, Susie Lopo-Berry, council.
Sean McGoys, city council.
Harold Rodriguez, city council.
Harold Dominguez, city manager.
Don Quixote, City Mayor.
Okay.
Eugene May, City Attorney.
Okay. So, you want to start, Aaron, with updates? This is going to be a very fast meeting. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, don't really have any updates.
Okay.
MGLA, their questions were about our, our conversation concerning parking minimums. Um, and then also they had a question about, which I've already spoken with Harold about, um, what is the, uh, process look like after a subcontractor or contractor gets done with a street project because some people have complaints about some of the work that's been done? And so, I said, "Well, that's not a council policy issue. That's an operations issue." I don't know if we'd really be making policy concerning that process. Uh, Planning and Zoning Commission, we've already, in our last meeting, dealt with what they talked about the last time, which was the project Mustang River House pad, or whatever you would call it. So, we've already dealt with that. As far as Housing and Human Services, they have a special meeting on Thursday to talk about constraints concerning grant funding for 2025. And so, we'll find out more about that on Thursday.
That's interesting. Oh, there are too many constraints.
Money, money, have to do it all.
Yeah, shall we, the money?
That's what it is. But go ahead, Sean.
So, Consortium of Cities only meets every other month, so, uh, they'll meet next month. The, uh, Longmont Public Media canceled their meeting this month, so they didn't meet. I missed the, um, crab meeting. Uh, I don't know what was going on. It felt like it was something to do with something that the council was doing on that day. Uh, but, uh, and then, uh, last night was the golf course. And golf course, uh, they've got some interesting things going. They have a new sprinkler system at, uh, Twin Peaks. And before, you know, if the greens themselves, the, uh, putting greens needed, uh, extra water, you had to do the entire area. But now, they have this technology that just got put in on the front nine that allows it to be much more specific about how much water. So, we're saving water there. The system, if some, uh, they have sensors in the system now that if the system gets, uh, they notice there's too much water, they can back off on water, saving some water that way and, and things like that. Looking at UofC, uh, they have, uh, taken out the, the old buildings for the, the maintenance and everything like that. They're putting in a new one. They've got some great, uh, before they had, uh, their, their, their piles of, of dirt and sand and things like that, just in piles. Now, they have actually, uh, areas like you go to some of these places where they have actually, uh, cement kind of barriers and a bottom to them. And so, then they don't lose as much of that material, uh, to the wind and to other things like that, so that's handy. And, uh, then, uh, there really have been, uh, despite some of the weather conditions, they've actually had some pretty decent number of rounds. And so, they're doing pretty well there. So, overall, they're doing pretty good.
Is that new maintenance facility going on?
It will be. It will be soon.
That's why they took the buildings down, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, they did steal.
Yeah, they're, they're not, oh, they got steel blockings.
They're, no, oh, no, they've got steel.
Steel, yeah, steel, yeah. It didn't sound like they had the steel blockings either. That's why I didn't say that, like, going forward. They missed that part. So, anyhow, that's, that's something that's new.
Great. Go ahead, Susie.
Okay, so, um, we did get, during the museum advisory board meeting, we did get a presentation on the, uh, expansion. So, I don't have printout of it, but I will be happy to pass my laptop around. It's really quite phenomenal. So, um, yeah, but we'll do that. So, you know, it's mostly kind of asking questions around that. I think in all the arts and public places, the, um, library and museum, again, there was a lot of concern around getting new people to apply. I think in the museum and library, yeah, both of those, they'll have vacant seats because not enough applicants have come in. So, it really minimizes the opportunity to be able to, um, to be, for, um, board members to miss a day because then they won't meet quorum. So, um, one of the, um, um, board members from the li- library advisory board had asked about, say, the Longmont Housing Authority, that there was an advertisement she saw on the leader and wanted to know if that's an option for other board members. But those are, aren't those paid?
The advertising, for Hall of Fame.
For Hall of Fame, okay. So, she saw that specific one, or she, I don't know.
There's a different cycle, but we do.
Okay, okay. So, I will let, I will let them know that there, those were out there as well. So, you know, just how can we get folks to...
To apply.
To apply.
And if I could add, Susie.
Yes.
We have a council director. We have a, a large list of all the ways we recruit and advertise.
Yes.
Mail it out. We do it for every recruitment.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I had said, you know, I see it on my social media feeds, for Facebook, Instagram.
Because we boost those.
We boost those. So, I, I see those.
Yeah.
Regular, so, so that was, you know, people aren't looking. But again, it's one of those things, like, it gets to the point when you're organizing or trying to get the new word out, I mean, you practically have to knock door to door. Knock on each ever, every single door and ask them personally. And at least three times, because they'll forget. So, it's, it's a challenge. So, I think those two boards really had articulated that, that frustration of, like, how do we get more people coming in? So, that was the museum, the library, uh, you know, they're talking about the recruitment. And then, uh, they voted on approving the budget needs. So, what they want to present to Harold, or I guess, what is it, the two, level two and level one? So, level one is...
Must pay bills.
Must pay bills. And then the level two items. And, you know, they showed, he shared with the board, or John shared with the board the, um, priorities. And the board came to a consensus. So, they did say that they would put out an email...
Great.
Um, to all of council, uh, letting know what the priorities were and statement on that component. Yeah, I think it wasn't much, I think in the art and public places, I'm trying to go back in memory and look in my notes, there was a great discussion on those wrapped traffic boxes. There's a little, um, they're, what they're looking to do is add a little QR code. So, when you are at those traffic boxes and you see the vinyl wrap around there, you can actually...
Those are vinyl wrapped? They're not going to paint it?
No, they're vinyl wraps.
Man.
Yeah. And so, there, you'd be able to scan the QR code and get history.
Oh.
Get context on the, the images that they see there. So, that'll be working its, its way down the pike. And then a couple of dates to keep in mind if you're interested. The Clover Meadows Park is having their artist proposal presentations on June 4th. And the Fox Meadows Park, um, the artist proposal presentations will happen on July 22nd.
I'm not really sure where they were going to be at.
Well, I'll last it on, I'll send it out to you. I was so proud I got those dates and notes on. But, um, yeah, so there was, there was just a lot of, well, moving board from taking the next chair and doing all the, the work of the, uh, the ins and outs.
Uh-huh. Do you think there's fewer applicants for library and museum?
I don't know.
I think there'd be a lot of interest there.
Is it, um, do they meet?
No, they meet in the afternoon. I mean, that's why I, I'm able to do it, because they meet at 6:30, 4:30. Yeah.
All right, um, Longmont Sister Cities, um, just all, all of the students are working together. They, because I've talked about how I want the students to, they have to go over to the, whatever, uh, place where the, the students are going, whether it's, uh, Mexico or Japan, they do a, a dance from here. And so, now they're going to have a choreographer, all of them together, and they're going to do the same dance. Hallelujah. So, um...
Oh, okay.
They're going to do that. And they're, of course, in fundraising mode right now. The parents are, um, and so, we got ti- everybody got tickets, but they're right now fundraising. So, everything has been reserved, at least I know, for, uh, for everything. So, right now, everybody are, all the parents and everything are in fundraising mode. Um, and let's see, TAB meeting, it just had June 26th is Bike to Work Day. Live music and food is going to be at the Senior Center, I believe. Um, and I believe they're going to have, is that right, Senior Center, although?
I think so.
Okay.
Down to the...
Bike to work.
Oh, no, different.
Okay. Um, so, we had Front Range Passenger Rail presentation. And there was a lot. It was a lot going on. Um, they are taking surveys. I don't, I never got the ticket thing back again, so I don't have it.
Boy, I took the rest of the code.
No, 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 just the original one. I wanted to, I'll get it emailed out to all the councilors to take a survey as to what they want to see. And on that little survey, it's like a regular ticket. They, they let you know what stops they're going to stop at. And, uh, I don't even, I hadn't even taken, taken the survey yet because I just wanted to make sure. The mayor and I were at Coffeewood Council, and so, we passed those out, um, during Coffeewood Council so people can take those surveys. And I know the Italian pizza place is opening up downtown. They're working on it, almost done, which is really good. Yeah, so, oh, and then third, we have NADA on this coming Thursday. So, the meeting will be a month later. And last time, I think I already talked about, we had a retreat. Yeah, and they talked about the history and all of that stuff, so.
NADA.
Um, so, and then they did bring up, uh, back to Front Range, Front Range Passenger Rail. They did talk about the three, House Bill 1012, Well County, um, these are my notes, so I'm just...
Yeah.
House Bill 1012, Senate Bill 184, and Senate Bill 230. Um, those are the bills that they're supporting. And, um, he was really talking a lot about 230. Senate Bill 230 would, uh, create three new funds, some clean transit enterprise, C-DOT, um, 20% dedicated for passenger rail needs, and it'll cost around $300 billion. They have not completed their service development plan, and they are trying to, uh, from my understanding, the gover- the governor is trying to decide if they want to put this on the ballot, or...
You just covered my hole. Thank you.
Well, I'll let you complete that, then, um...
No, you're fine.
So, um, another thing, too, they're talking about buying the trains. That's another thing. It could be 10-year timeframe before we can get trains as well. So, that's an issue. Anyway, there's a, I have a lot of notes. So, but I'm sure, Mayor, you're going to cover the rest. And that was Andy Carson and Christie...
Brett.
Brett from Chief of Staff, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Just to piggyback off of that, because this, um, was made first, so to be kind of early on this, the North by 25 Coalition, which, um, the bus tank platform is set to open in the fall.
That's the one in Well County, right?
That's the one on I-25 between here and Firestone.
That's great.
They're just having a little trouble with the north platform, the northbound platform. They, um, the SB 24-184 didn't pass, and, uh, they were successful in amending it so that they were able to keep their toll revenue. They built a toll road north going up to Loveland, which, by the way, is free, um, until fall. So, you want to go try it out. And then, um, they were also excited of the House Bill 1313, the corridor density bill. They stripped off the, the funding laws and also removed the credible lawsuit if you don't comply. So, um, they mentioned that, um, House Bill 32, there's ozone-free communities, and they're working on funding for fairs and maybe like a statewide pass. So, if you take an RTD, you can also take bus tank, you can also take Front Range Passenger Rail, you know, without having to buy one from each, um, organization. So, they're doing a statewide pass study, um, so that we can have a seamless access to the system. Now, interestingly enough, there was an article regarding, uh, 229 and 230 about oil and gas offering funding for transit. So, so that's nice. Not happening. Okay, you're next. I'll hear the count, uh, point, counterpoint.
There you go.
Uh, Visit Longmont, they are having a Monty the Longmonster costume design to show up at events. And they're always looking for someone to wear the costume.
I think Eugene is tall enough for it.
Yeah, yeah.
Too tall.
You know, I thought me and Andrew, that's a big to do. Uh, recent surveys indicate that visitors to Longmont are 49 and a half years age, on average, and the highest travel is between May to October. This was interesting. Uh, so, we discussed more ways to greet and travel during the winter. They're having that ice climbing event that, uh, got signed. And, uh, they're discussing a partnership with the airshow in September to offer, you know, microtransit is going to be a big thing, and then also maybe offer maps, so, uh, everybody goes to the same restaurant, but, you know, it's dispersed throughout the city. And then they're also discussing or, um, looking at a TID, which is, um, Tran- Tourism Tax District. We'll see, we'll see about that. Let's see. Then there's a whole bunch of things that kind of relate to the budgeting that's coming up. For one, the LEDP, we had Front Range Passenger Rail there, there was a vigorous skepticism and lots of questions. But I think what is interesting, and I'm sorry, I didn't have, uh, wasn't at a place where I can make copies, but Elevate, which is part of LEDP, uh, put out some data about Longmont. They gave me my extra copy, and I know Harold has one. What is interesting about this, uh, well, there's, is the relationships, I think, between the information. One, they said the population's 106,000 in Longmont now.
Who are those six people?
Uh, yeah. I mention that because it comes up in our Housing Authority packet about our population, because I think we actually are bigger than the older now. Or right about the same. Uh, out of that, the labor force is 59,000 and almost 500, and the school district has 31,000 enrolled, which means there's only 15,000 people that aren't working. Which, um, there's only 14%, 14.5% of the population is not working.
Wait a minute, those 31,000 in SVPSD, those, those are the employees?
Uh, no, those are enrollments. So, it's showing...
So, they're not enrolled, but not enrolled or retired or maybe unemployed?
Well, you know, 18-year-olds could be working. This was the SVV SD enrollment, according to the school district. And that seems to support national data, that people working to 75 have the same conversation in the GRR, the retirement pension funds. So, like, all of these topics overlap, so bear with me. What was interesting about this is the median family income. And according to Elevate Longmont is 144,100. And that the, um, average earnings per job is 84,000, which means that most families work in 1.7 jobs. And if the median family income's 144,000, I mean, you really can't afford more than a $300,000 home to qualify for that. And, um, that was also resonated in our retirement and pension funds, that they're saying that inflation is staying steady, whereas, you know, inflation's all over the place. And so, what seems to be true is that this is a, a standard that's somewhat not been changing with inflation. There was a people-powered presentation from the State Economic and Demography Department of DOLA that was on April 24th. And some of the planning group was there. There was a set of slides that I sent to Harold. I think the planning department got it. But he was saying that we are aging, the 65-plus group is expanding. Says he only studies births, deaths, jobs, and migration, migration being travel between states. And, um, the birth rate is slowing down to the point of a negative population growth, and we're going to have to rely on migration for future growth. And this kind of relates to one that I heard 10 years ago from his predecessor, who said that Generation Z would be smaller, would have to be more efficient to produce as much as Generation X did. So, once back to elevation, or...
Can you make, can you get all of that to, to Dawn so that we can have that same information? That would be nice.
I know. The slides are, well, some of the, some of the softer businesses that came out of there said, "That was a lot of data." But it's all color-coded, you know, come on, have any trouble with it. Um, and then this, I think, is very interesting. Just have to be, you know, if it's at average, you need to relate them together. But median numbers, as Harold and I discussed, are more relevant in some ways. But the gross national, uh, regional product is $9 billion. So, uh, one of the ways to help with inflation is to increase production. And it looks like if, um, based on the earnings, everybody's producing about 150,000 per employee in town. If it went up to 200,000, we could actually affect inflation in town. A more reasonable look. I know. Be more efficient, just what they said, the State Department. So, I'm like, okay. Interesting information, and I think will be useful when we start seeing budget stuff, maybe make it a little more fun, like, that way. I think all for me. I don't think I had anything else going on, except for, um, Joan and Marcia and I participated in the leadership panel for the, um, Government Day of the City. And that, a lot of conversation there was about transportation as well.
Buses.
Yeah. And one thing we didn't get to mention was Vision Zero. I thought about that after. They were concerned that microtransit, based on how much ridership on buses, that microtransit would not be as viable. However, I see Flex Ride and Via being overwhelmed, so, I think...
It's a pilot program. And, um, and we said we needed their feedback, constant feedback, as, as we move forward as we're working, and how can we change it?
Yeah.
That was good. It was interesting. So, I sent out to each of you a, uh, SIRSAP, Epics of Behavior Conduct. And just so you have it, if you want to put it in rules of procedure or take, uh, parts of it out for rules of procedure, it's up to the council. I just think going forward and some of the things that have happened that have been labeled free speech at different places, uh, I think it'd be a good idea, just my opinion, if we discussed at some point, not tonight. Are we, as leaders of the city, above certain, uh, ways of rules of behavior and conduct? Do we, do we act differently in the public, you know, events or whatever, as far as engaging with the public? And I think you guys know what I mean, on some areas. But if you're interested next year or whatever, then we should talk about it, because when, last year, when I brought up the epics, we also brought up the rules of procedure, so... So, by the way, Marcia is still in New York, right? And, uh, she was going to join us, but didn't. So, uh, the only thing that I'm really working on is that Front Range Passenger Rail, because it is involved in Dr. Cog, in RTD, in NADA, with the governor's office, is, it's huge. So, uh, I give what we've been doing, that is a little bit different than what Shakita said. Today, we had our governance meeting. There are different groups, finance, governance, planning. And, uh, this, this discussion was around station locations, because when we do the service development plan, we have to have our locations. Uh, in SB 138, when the governor statutorily created FRPR, he said where the nine stations were going to be, but all, it was just locations for cities. But now each city has to decide within their city where these stations are going to be. And are the platforms going to be low platforms, high platforms? Are you going to be able to take bicycles on? Are you going to walkers, uh, dogs? Uh, I mean, I thought it would just be built station, but it's not. It's pretty involved. And some of the jurisdictions, especially, um, Colorado Springs, uh... Pueblo? Pueblo's ended in a different, uh, they pretty much have a station. I'm not sure it's what we want because of the Southwest Chief. And that's where we would switch from FRPR to the Southwest Chief to go to San Francisco. So, uh, that, it's a huge conversation, and, and before we can do the plan and actually get some of these dollars, uh, we have to have all of that done. So, each city is trying to figure out, even Longmont, where are these going to be? What is the station going to look like? And plan that. So, it's a huge deal.
But we're ahead of the game, still.
Yeah, we are ahead of the game.
We're still ahead.
We're always ahead of the game.
But, but what concerns me is what Shakita said about, uh, the trains. They don't have the, the locomotives that...
So, that is true, that we do have to buy them, but, um...
I'll let you go, and then...
There, there used to be more places in Colorado, in the United States, that actually made trains. And there are, we learned that at NLC. And, was that where? Yeah. So, um, that's part of the problem right now. But we're not going to get this done tomorrow. And they're making the trains now. But we do get, and this is what the survey is about as well, what do you want the train to look like? If they're going to make them for us, what do you want in them? Do you want internet service? Do you want, uh, a place, uh, a car just for bicycles?
Brewery?
Yeah, brewery.
Oh, I was thinking it was locomotive that they were short, not the, not the cars. I was thinking it was locomotive they were behind on, not the car.
It's everything. It's a train set.
Yeah.
The whole set. That is the set. So, um, that discussion is going on, but that is a later discussion, because our discussion today was, was choosing an operator. There, when, um, when the governor came out with the SB 138, the discussion was all about Amtrak, because Amtrak has a lease with BNSF on the tracks. However, FRPR is an entity of, to its own, and we get to decide who operates it. So, last week, last month, at our meeting, um, Amtrak presented, and it was a very in-depth presentation of what they would do, what they would offer, pricing, um, it just went on and on and on. As far as fairs, the local entity gets to decide what the fairs are going to be. But before, Amtrak had a one, a one thing fits all, one price. And now they're looking at different levels of pricing, um, as they learn more and more about being a passenger rail system. The interesting thing that, that I told Harold, and we've been working on, is that Loveland and Fort Collins do not have anybody on the board. So, I've been sending them stuff they didn't even know was happening. So, we have conversations with them, and they are now pretty excited about being able to, to plan, and we're going to have another big meeting with them and the mayors, who were not on that, uh, meeting, about, uh, what kind of grants are available, what is their station going to look like, all of the things that everybody else is discussing. So, I guess we are the ones going with the North.
Yeah, it's the...
Yeah, and see, and that's what's frustrating, because when I learned that too, I mean, that's going to put everything behind, because they don't even have all the information, let alone a station, an idea of a station. So, I mean, we got to get them up to par, they got to get money, and then, you know what I'm saying? And so, like.
Well, Harold and I are working with them and having, we're having another meeting planned. But this other part I'm going to tell you about, we want to have it first, and then go bring it to Fort Collins and Loveland, their engineers, their operations, and their mayors. And the other interesting thing about, is it Loveland or Estes Park? It was Estes Park they got a new mayor.
Loveland has an interim mayor. I know that just because he was on Northside 25, Polish, he's an interim mayor. Trying to think of his name.
It's Jenny.
Jenny Artis, Fort Collins.
Who's the lover?
Jackie Marsh.
Jackie Marsh.
So, it was Estes Park.
Yeah, yes.
So, they have to be brought up to date, they don't even know what's going on, so we're taking on that role. The other thing that they are discussing is, we are, at our last governance meeting, the gentleman, and I can't remember his last neighbor's name, it was Jeff, from Cheyenne, Wyoming was there, and they're very interested in this North Rail as well. So, we want to pull them into the conversation, because they are trying to go after their service, no, corridor ID plan next year, in 2025, when there's another tranche of money being put out to do that. And that corridor ID plan is where we got our first $500,000 to decide what the corridor was going to look like. So, I said that Amtrak came to our last meeting, this Thursday, the Association of Independent Rail Operators are going to be in our meeting, it's just an association that, like a management company, that has a whole bunch of apartment buildings under their management company, they have independent rail operators. The rail operators, I'm very interested in hearing from them, but I personally am skeptical, this is my bias, because some of those rails that, those trains were purchased by venture capitalist companies. If they were for sale, if they were being, if they were not doing well, then venture capitalists would buy them. That doesn't mean that they're not good, I don't understand that. And I personally am hesitant to go with someone that we, I don't want to be the, the. Guinea pig.
Yeah.
I was thinking of spring, no, I don't think what I'm talking about. The ones that were in that Vietnam, Vietnam. So.
Potbellic.
I don't want to be the potbellic pig. So, it'll be interesting to hear from them, but they don't have the names, they, I don't know, leases with BNSF. Why should we not go with the best? So, it'd be interesting to hear from them, but the board has to decide that. Here's the other piece, that is with 184. In 184 and part of SB 230, the governor has somewhat mandated that RTD build the Northwest Corridor. But then, in 184, there is a part of it that's hard to explain, that from Longmont to Fort Collins, RTD was to bring them into the district, the way Andy Carcian interprets it, I don't interpret it that way at all, that they're going to operate it from Loveland to Fort Collins, no, from Longmont to Fort Collins. And I said, but they're not in the RTD district.
But that's why they're trying to create this power district, develop the IGA to.
That's different.
Oh, that's a different one.
That's very different, and this is why it's confusing. So, I've had conversations with Eric Davidson, and we'll have lunch with him on Friday, because he's confused about it as well. What it actually says, and I emailed all my questions to Deborah Johnson, the director of RTD, to say, this is what it says, and then she answered. But basically, what that means is that they could operate it if they want to, but it would not be pulled into the district, because to go into the district, that has to be a vote of the people. And I sent that, all of that highlighted, and my questions to Deborah, to the mayors of both Loveland and Fort Collins, and I said, have you read this? Do you want to be in the district? I don't interpret it this way, but this is the way FRPR is interpreting it. So, what I'm trying to do is work with RTD, Loveland and Fort Collins, and FRPR, and say, we have to get this straight, what are we talking about? So, if they, so I asked Deborah, if you are the operator from Longmont to Fort Collins, who pays for the operations and maintenance on that line? Because they are in the FRPR district, that makes no sense. So, according to SB 30, and Lisa Kaufman is supposed to send me all of the pieces of that that say what it's supposed to be, is that the state will give them operating money. Now, why, that makes no sense to me, because FRPR is supposed to be getting operating money from the federal government, not from the state. So, you can see how confusing this is.
You should have heard his excuse about the federal money, talking about people never use this amount of money, they don't know how to distribute the money, they never had to distribute this amount of money before. And I said, hold up, we just got out of a pandemic. So, people had to learn how to distribute money real quick, fast and hurry. So, you telling me they don't know how to distribute money? Are you serious? And then he said they went to Dallas, Fort Worth, for, about the plan. And so, they're talking with BNSF, that's where BNSF is at. And now they're talking about getting some more consultants or consult, I said, listen, how many consultants have you all gotten already, and what are you doing with the consultants? What are the results? And I said, is being, someone asked on the advisory board, is BNSF contributing financially? And he was like, no, and I was like, did anybody ask? BNSF, you going all the way to Fort Worth to talk to them, you didn't ask them for no money? Yeah, it was a little frustrating meeting to me, because I felt like they just kept making excuses. And they're trying to wait to see, to put this on the ballot. So, what is the point, the 23 cent per every $100, that's what they're trying to get a tax in order to pay for?
I think it's 0.023.
0.023.
It's not 23, I would love 23 cents, but that's not.
Yeah, I think it's 0.023.
Okay, yeah.
And that is what, that's what Polis wants.
That's what he wants, yeah.
Of 0.2 or of 0.2.
For every $100, right?
So, I was excited, and this is just barely in the words, but it's a discussion that the chair of FRPR wants to have. He emailed me today and said, yeah, let's do this. Jeff from Cheyenne, we're going to do an MOU with them. Yeah, and he said, and I had heard this four or five years ago from another person, Andy Grauburger is his name, who's been in Colorado Rail forever, he's very smart. The discussions between UP and BNSF about five or six years ago was that, because of a rule that was made in the 60s, they can share their lines. They don't have to go, it used to be that they had to get congressional okay on that. But now they don't, if I understood it correctly. So, what they are working on, and this is to BNSF's, to their credit, they want to move all the freight out of Colorado, basically, but this area, the district, Boulder County up to Union Station, and reroute it all the way around, really east.
To the east, yeah.
And coming into Longmont, switching it from going, the freight from going through our city to go east and around that way. Which is a huge benefit, because we're supposed to share the line with freight. And one of the reasons that, from my understanding, that BNSF wants to do it is because of the risk factor going through towns and the speed. They can't get the speed they need for freight, they're not making timelines, et cetera. So, we are in those discussions as well. I could go on and on, but what's the point? So, one of the things that I, oh my gosh, no, we have 15. So, one of the things, I talked to Andy Carcian on the phone Monday, he checks in every once in a while. He keeps saying, we are working through, and I brought it up on the meeting today when they gave the updates on everything. He said, we are working through this, and we are working through that, and we are working through. And I stopped him, and I said, that doesn't mean anything to me, what are you talking about? And I asked Andy, you're supposed to be having a meeting between RTD and CDOT. Are you doing a meeting, sitting down in the room, with everybody discussing this? Are these one-off phone calls to CDOT, to RTD? He said, they're one-off phone calls. And I said, so, each entity is not hearing what the other ones said? So, I brought that up on the meeting today, and I got three thumbs up, really, from the other people on the board. There's only, there were only six or seven of us, it was a committee. I said, you need to all sit down in the same room, CDOT, RTD, FRPR, the governor's office, and legal, and hammer this out, because you are supposed to be either an IGA with three entities having an IGA, or a power of authority. I don't think what's happening is unusual at all, we're trying to build a railroad. And the ones who know how to build the railroad are the ones we're trying to contact and do it right. So, we had to wait until the legislation came down, because we didn't know what the governor was going to do with all these bills. So, now that everything's signed and delivered, it's going to be hit the road hard, make motions, make decisions, and go at it as hard. I like boards and councils that are active, I don't like people just taking seats and filling them. And for our 15-member board, I would say there's probably four people that are, and that's the same with RTD, that really are interested and working hard. That's the new change, the governor wants to reduce all these boards, have them smaller, have people who are very interested and want to work. So, the vote. We were supposed to, according to the governor, go to a ballot this November, we're not ready. And one of the reasons we're not ready is that, and I brought it up, I said, I'm not happy with SB 230, because I worked very hard in getting fracking out of Longmont, and our city has moved very hard in getting the wells out of here. So, to turn around and say we're going to use those dollars to build this railroad, I have to say that people blew up at me, and I said, I didn't do that. And I told them on the board, I'm very unhappy about it, I do not support this. But that was before it passed, but now that it's passed, we have to use it. So, the lynchpin for me in getting the vote, because this is going to be an incredible train, it's going to be amazing, is getting the freight out of here. That would make people happy, if we could ship the freight out, and they would, so that's why I'm working really hard on it. They're not happy about, you know, 350.org, Sierra Club, and Earthworks bought into Polis's things, so. But there are other organizations that are just unhappy that, really, we're going to use. So, anyway, that's it. We're probably at Thursday's meeting, going to decide, should we go in '26 for the vote, which is an off-year. I would like to go in '25, Andy wants to go in '26, I know my reasons why he wants to go there, which aren't worth saying. I think that if we wait too long, he's telling me the service delivery plan will take two years. No, it should not, it should be done, it could be done by January if they got it together. So, getting RTD to do their part is really hard, and this is why I'm talking to Eric, because he needs to know what FRPR is doing, if we're all going to work together, we have to know what each other's doing. He's, RTD is paid for the feasibility study, for the fiscal part of it, for the Northwest Corridor. I said, why is it BNSF giving you that? And he said, because they're confused, they don't know who's asking for it. Is FRPR working? And the reason they're confused is because the three entities are supposed to be working together. And if BNSF is evaluating the cost, how big of a cost are they evaluating? But Eric is right, RTD already paid for it, they should have it. So, that's another part I'm going to push hard on BNSF. Give RTD the feasibility study, so they can start working this out. Well, actually, remember, Harold, when Brian and that whole group went to Fort Worth? Fort Worth, the peak study was ready to go. It was RTD that wasn't, they just will not move. But the governor, I heard from, somebody from the governor's office that I talked to, said that RTD's not ready for January, by January, they're going to mandate and just take her. And they can statutorily, they were created statutorily, just like FRPR was.
You mean that it separate RTD from the project?
No, the bill that did not pass, it didn't even make it out of committee, and I forget the number of that bill, but it was the one that was going to redo RTD, cut down the.
The number of.
The number of board seats, they were going to be appointed, they were going to be, some would be elected, some would be appointed, but it would be no more than seven or eight.
We should put Don to Don on there, during the LEP, he had great questions, some of which could not be answered. And he said, so, this isn't going to happen until, what did they say, something, he said, so, so, kind of, he said, so. This isn't going to happen until, or this will only happen until everything falls apart and it doesn't happen, or something. And it was like, yeah, yeah.
The governor has put a ton of money toward this. The thing is, it is going to happen. We just need to get all the players on the same happy. Harold has been great working with me on it, and Phil Greenwald, and we're just kind of making our own little committee on this side.
The key leas are saying, if there's not movement, I would guess by September.
The governor's going to.
Smackdowns are going to start.
No, okay, it's a good rule.
And so, part of it, I know Councilman Gyarber about a grant, said something. BNSF, CDOT, and Longmont are working on a grant application for a half-grade ground crossing. And then also a planning grant, so there's a lot of work being done. And I think, you know, of course, you know, there's, when Andy presented to LEP those stuff, that I had to jump in on. I mean, they could do it in a year.
Oh, absolutely.
This is not hard. I think, you know, to Don's questions, there's certain questions you can't answer, just because the money's going to dictate it, because they won't talk to you unless they know the money's appropriated.
Right.
And so, you know, there is a chicken, I mean, we know the egg comes first, I mean, egg's the appropriation before the rail companies will really talk to you. But, you know, there's, they're putting money into this.
Huge amounts of money, and I wanted to. And I wanted to just share, because I know you're going to get asked questions, of how hard it is to get the, I would say, the base of what this is all going to be together, first of all. And I don't think that FRPR moved fast enough. However, they did need to wait through the legislation. So, because there were too many groups working on different parts of the legislation, no one knew where this was going to end up. So now that that has been done...
Well, full disclosure, I did tell them they need to hire our staff as consultants.
Which, our staff?
I did. Phil, you know, I mean, I did.
Thank you, Shakita.
I said, you know. I said, stay and hire another staff, consultants. I said, you got them right here. I said, yeah, you know, I'm sorry I pimped them out, but...
That's, that's part of what we're doing. It's part of what we're going to meet with the other communities is talking about rail. And so the governor's office wants us to kind of talk about what we've done and how we're positioned and, and different projects related to siding and connecting some of the dots. So that's part of the meeting, mayors talking about, mayors, city managers, transportation planners on the Northern Corridor, so we could get in line.
I should be sending the proposal to the governor, also consulting. I mean, we shouldn't be giving out information for free. I know we all got to work together, but it's not our fault that they're not up, up to speed.
Oh, you don't need to come join the board. I need another loud voice.
So I will say, I think that's what's helping us on some of these transportation projects. So, you know, when you partner with a railroad, a state, and a city on a multimillion dollar product, you know, transit oriented development, it's probably a different way of doing it, but leveraging it for different state funding to be more positive or to bring things to our communities. So I would say that's what we're trying to do.
Yeah. And just like any other huge organization, you've got egos that get in the way and politics. And that's why they all need to sit down in the same room and hash it out.
They need a media.
Sammy. Like Shakita said, we have the staff. So that's basically all I got and all I got. But I did find out, I didn't know this, I emailed Melinda Stevens and Dr. Cog right before I came. I found out at their meeting, Rex, Doug Rex, the director, said, because we was talking about FastTrax and they didn't even update on FastTrax, which I didn't agree with because it wasn't what I've been hearing for years. And he said, whatever FastTrax does, Dr. Cog has to okay. And I know I misinterpreted that, so I emailed Melinda and said, can you have somebody calm down and clarify that? Because I didn't understand it correctly. But basically, the guy who presented on FastTrax, what Doug was saying, calming the room down, was it doesn't matter because Dr. Cog would have to weigh in on this first. And maybe because it's federal funding, but I don't know. I've never heard that before. So that's all I got. Which is more than enough, I think.
Well, I think, you know, it's an NPO connection, so I don't know that they have oversight, but...
Oh, that might be it.
It's working with the NPO, so that would be the Northern NPO with Loveland, Fort Collins. And then, I think that may be what he's referencing.
I'm sure. I just have never understood it.
But I don't know if they have to prove it. Phil will know the answer to that one.
He will.
What Don Hadad said was, the way it comes together is for it to seem like nothing's going to come together. And then everybody said, yeah, that's what we heard.
But I think we are pushing to make it come together because it has to.
The confusion really is, is their primary inner-city rail is what is the driver. And that's where they're going to use the 50 dollars that are already coming in from Denver to Longmont. And why they need the increase is to... And CDOT may put money in to help get it to Fort Collins, but they need the increase to help operationalize that. And that'll be the inner-city rail that will go Loveland, Fort Collins, Longmont, Boulder, Denver. RTD's connection that's causing our confusion is they could run a commuter line. And that's where that legislation gives them the ability to run a commuter line in between the inner-city rail. But you can't, you've got to start with the inner-city rail because that's what's going to leverage the federal dollars that the city now can see because they can't use it for the commuter rail.
Are we going to own those rails?
No.
Then why are we doing a capital improvement on BNSF's property and their equipment?
Probably because they have easement, especially...
No, I mean the railroad easement.
So the best part of it is, it's too expensive. You have to build your own lines, so that's part of the agreement.
But I mean, to this point, why are we not asking for a little bit of partnership there for the capital?
Here's the other thing, when they, when you, when you were on the train, they had to go so slow because if they didn't go slow, they would probably jump tracks or some other thing like that. It was too heavy, and so they had to do the upgrades.
Right, right. It's from going from freight rail to passenger train rail, but...
So it sounds like they have to upgrade the entire system.
Are we going to pay for time on the rail or are we going to pay for a train? This is a question, some of the questions that were asked.
Amtrak leases, has the lease from BNSF. We don't lease that. But we pay, we pay the operator to run the service. And that comes from all of the funding that is out there now, as well as the cost of the tickets. Which is why we need to have some kind of a tax or how we're going to fund it from the residents. So how do we sell that to the residents is the marketing. How do we sell that to them?
Yeah, and it's, that's kind of the operator question where the mayor and I have talked about this. Amtrak already has an agreement to run a BNSF track.
Right.
So while you're considering an operator that doesn't have an agreement, then you're going to have to negotiate a different program. So there's some decision points that I think are clear in certain areas. And I think that's what everybody has to work through.
Then why can't we just use their trains then?
That's...
Apparently we can. That was the question. If we don't have a train kit, we wouldn't, you know, use their trains.
No, that's where Andy's confusing it. That's if you choose a different operator. If you choose Amtrak, Amtrak already has the train kits and they already have the agreement with BNSF. Amtrak can run on any BNSF line in the United States.
Right.
Because of another, another agreement. And that's what's causing all the confusion.
Right.
Which there was a lot of confusion in this presentation.
So Shakita's point of view, we always teach in business and marketing class, ask for the business. And what we need to do is ask for the business, to your point, ask for the business. And we're not asking for the business after that, so I guess we're running over.
Sorry. Thank you, everybody. That was more information than you needed, probably, but I don't know how to get it out there except for going...